Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our first meeting in October. Madam Clerk, would you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk’s Office in preparation of the Council Annual Meeting Notice dated January 3, 2019, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that the fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman.
Here.
Ms. Fox.
Here.
Ms. Gould.
Here.
Ms. Little.
Here.
Mr. McTiernan.
Here.
Mr. Vartan.
Here.
President Naidoo.
Here. Okay, now for the Pledge of Allegiance, I’d like to call upon former councilman and former council president Frank Maciosi to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Frank, come on.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the explanatory note regarding closed sessions, hearings, and comments?
A closed-session meeting as authorized by state statute was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give her email a copy to the City Clerk’s Office at rlicatice@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you are using electronic device to follow meeting agenda or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, onto approval for minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the regular and closed-session meeting minutes for September 17, 2019? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, great. Moving on. Madam Mayor, first report.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our meeting. The first thing I would like to talk about is the Union County mosquito control effort. We had thought that they would be spraying tonight. However, the FAA approval did not come through today due to wind, is my understanding. So tomorrow, due to recent confirmed human cases of EEE, which is Eastern Equine Encephalitis in Berkeley Heights, the Union County mosquito control intends to spray by helicopter sections of Summit adjacent to the Wachong River Reservation and the Percyak River corridor tomorrow, October 3, from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m., again weather permitting. The EPA does not require relocating or taking special precautions during mosquito control spraying, but people may choose to avoid or minimize exposure by staying indoors during the application to the immediate area, keeping windows shut, window fans and window air conditioners off, or set to circulate indoor air, keeping children’s toys indoors, keeping pets indoors, as well as their food, water dishes, and toys. We will be sending out a robo-call tomorrow if we are in fact having the spraying, if the Union County is going to spray tomorrow evening in Summit. Bells across America. Bells will ring from coast to coast as a grateful nation pauses to honor fallen firefighters who died in the line of duty in 2018 on Sunday, October 6, at 10:00 a.m. Following ringing of bells, a brief ceremony will be held outside the fire headquarters in Summit. For 37 consecutive years, the National Fallen Firefighters Foundation Memorial Weekend has been held in Emmitsburg, Maryland, to honor firefighters who have given their lives protecting the communities they serve. We are very thankful that a team of Summit firefighters, Battalion Chief Paul Mbimbo, Lieutenant Brian Harnoy, firefighter Matthew Lemmons, and two retired members, Deputy Chief Rick DeGroot and Battalion Chief Joe Wurzbacher, are traveling to Emmitsburg to help organize and plan this Sunday event. The Summit Police Department is offering citizens the opportunity to have a nationally certified Summit Police Officer to inspect car seats for damage, defects, recalls, and assist with proper installation on Sunday, October 5, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in the City Hall parking lot. Please bring your vehicle owner’s manual and child seat instructions. For more information, call 908-598-2114. And I must say, as a fairly newly-minted grandmother, installing these car seats is really harder than trying to sort out your iPhone. So I highly recommend taking up the help from the police department. And then finally, residents are needed to serve on city government boards and commissions. Each November, the Council and I review volunteer applications and appoint new members. So now is the time to apply. Terms vary from one to five years. The amount of time each committee requires varies from committee to committee. So please go to thecityofsummit.org for more information and a list of volunteer opportunities. And as many of you have heard me say countless times, our city is run by our volunteers, starting with all the folks up here. And it’s a great way to know how your city works, how things get done, to get to know your other residents, and it’s really enriching for the volunteers. And frankly, we really need everyone in this town who makes this city the great city that is. So check out the website and consider volunteering for a board or a commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On to our Administrator, Michael Rogers. Michael?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. Two public workshops will be held on Monday, October 7, and Thursday, October 17, with two sessions on each of those days from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. to share information with residents and businesses on three proposed ordinances that will restrict use of single-use plastics: point-of-purchase plastic bags, poly-styrene, also known as Styrofoam, and plastic drinking straws. On Monday, October 7, the workshop meeting will be held at the Whitman Community Room here at City Hall on the second floor, and on October 17 at the Summit Community Center. Officials will be present at all sessions to explain exceptions, answer questions, and obtain input from businesses and residents on the development of the proposed ordinances. If you are unable to attend a workshop session and would like to share your opinion, please send an email to summitdcs@cityofsummit.org. The next Summit Free Market event will be held on Saturdays, October 12 and 19, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the City of Summit transfer station. Please bring your yard sale quality items to share and take whatever you want or need. It’s all free. Volunteers are still needed. If you can help out, please email pressoffice@cityofsummit.org. Another reminder, curbside leaf collection will begin on Monday, October 7, through Friday, December 6, or the first major snowstorm. Please place all leaves in brown paper bags at the curb on your regular household garbage collection day. Summit Fire Department is teaming up with the National Fire Protection Association to promote this year’s “Not Every Hero Wears a Cape: Plan and Practice Your Escape” campaign to educate on fire safety during Fire Prevention Week, October 6 through October 12. Please go to the city website for more information and fire safety tips. And finally, it is time for Summit residents to renew your annual permit for parking and transfer station access, which is by the end of this month, October 31. Your permit can be renewed online by clicking on a link at the City of Summit website news feed, which is at cityofsummit.org. If you have any questions, please contact Parking Services Agency 908-522-5100. And that’s all I have for this evening. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you very much, Michael. And for my Council President’s report, I want to just piggyback off of Michael’s comment regarding the workshop, as he said, for the plastics restrictions. And I want to kind of give you guys a sense of things coming down the pike that we’re aware of, because we have five more meetings after this before the end of the year. Plastic restrictions, we will probably look at them and consider them during the month of November, introduced in the first meeting in November and hearing for the second meeting in November. There’s also a sidewalk master plan. This was first introduced and discussed back in the springtime. This is a lot of work that has been going on behind the scenes, and I should acknowledge that there’s a lot of work by members of council that have been involved for all of this stuff, and they will certainly, when we go and talk about this stuff, you know, be duly recognized for all their hard work, along with members of the community. But the sidewalk master plan will be introduced here as a resolution at the meeting in October, the October 15 meeting. And then we have an update. We’re updating the Development Regulations and Ordinances, which is our DRO, which effectively is the basis for which all construction takes place in town. That’s something that the Planning Board has been involved in now for a number of years, working it through. They’re going to be reviewing it. It will come for a vote here in council, and that will probably happen through the months of November and December. So a lot of big stuff, as far as things that we’re working on, that we will get to before the end of this year. So with that, before we get to our ceremonial award tonight, we’re going to pull one of the resolutions from out of order, and this is the Resolution in Community Programs Number One, which I will turn over to Councilwoman Gould.
Good evening. Thank you. Resolution 6615, authorizing naming of Jordan Glad Youth Lounge at the Summit Community Center.
Second. Do you want to describe the resolution?
You always want me to say more. Jordan Glad has been part of our community for many, many years. He’s done an enormous amount of service for our community, and we have this wonderful space that was just finished, and we are going to dedicate the space to all his accomplishments.
Thank you. So typically, in these types of resolutions, I ask for comments. We would get comments here for a long period of time if I ask for people to come up and speak about Jordan. So I think, let me try to see if this is okay with everyone before we take a vote, if I kind of can summarize, and if other people want to chime in, obviously, feel free to do so. So how did we get here? I’m sure some of you are wondering, how did we get here? First of all, there is a Jordan Glad fan club out there, and there are people there who, and this is a grassroots effort, by people going out there and talking about the need to recognize them. This was not something Jordan sought. He was as surprised as anyone, I think, to know that this was going to happen. But there are people here that appreciated the hard work, because I think one of the things that we recognize in this town, as the mayor said, this town works through volunteers. But there are people who volunteer and volunteer and volunteer, and that’s former mayor Jordan Glad. So it went through first people who wanted it, then it went through the DCP Board, which voted unanimously in favor of doing it. And so the members of the DCP Board who are here, thank you for looking at it and considering it. And then it came up to council, and it was actually going to be done back in July when our dear friend Matt was here on council. And so, you know, Matt was a champion of doing this, and so he would have very much liked to have, obviously, been here to do it. But as I said, community service is something that sometimes people say, okay, this is how far I’ll go. I’ve served on council. I don’t need to do anything more. I’ve served as mayor. I don’t need to do anything more. But that’s not Jordan Glad. Jordan Glad has been involved in our community after he has done all this volunteer work. When we need somebody to raise money for the First Aid Squad, Jordan was involved in that. When we needed people to raise money for the community center to get it completed, Jordan was involved in that. Every Thanksgiving, Jordan is involved in getting turkeys and helping out with the First Fellows Foundation. That is what makes this town great, people who are willing to donate their most precious thing, which is their time, to help out others when it’s not, they don’t need to do it. They could spend time with their families, they could spend time with their friends, but they’re saying no. So when we honor tonight Jordan Glad, we honor his service to this community far beyond simply him being mayor, but more so for his achievement in this community of helping us all out. So with that, I will take a vote on this resolution. All those in favor? Aye. Okay. With that, I will ask former mayor Jordan Glad to come up and say a few words.
Knowing that this came from Matt makes tonight even more special. Thank you. It’s ironic that council would put my name on a youth lounge, being that I was the first mayor to cancel Halloween, twice. But I want to thank council, and of course, the mayor, for this. I cannot tell you how touched I am. In many ways, I’m a bit embarrassed. Being recognized for doing something in which you have gotten so much more in return makes you feel undeserving of an honor. As many of you know, this little city has sparked an emotional relationship with me. It’s like having 25,000 friends. I just haven’t met them all yet. I’ve received so much more back from Summit, so much more than I have given. My service to Summit has exposed me to some of the finest individuals, from our city employees like Chris Cotter, Paul Castcase, Joe Howe, and Bob Weg. Each of you taught me how to navigate the difference between private industry and city government. You taught me the pride and respect that public service deserves. I’m sure I was not an easy student. Those I served with, you showed me, while our backgrounds may be different, our politics stellar opposite, we could come together as friends and accomplish some pretty fun stuff. In particular, Mike Helmer, Frank Maciosi, and Frank Maciosi. While again, we didn’t agree on everything, we always came to a good place, not to mention the cocktails afterwards, the council meeting at Mike’s office. Frankly, it’s not because we were such wonderful people. Rather, it was this town called Summit that inspired us to do just that. Then there are those of you, you know what really, this is something I didn’t have to do eight years ago. Then there are those of you outside the city government, those that supported me from day one, Terry Turk, Rob Mark, and Steve Murphy. Steve, I understand tonight would not have been possible if it wasn’t for you and Guy Azel. I thank you so much. Regarding the REC Act, I’d be remiss if I did not mention Dennis and Harry. Few people realize the new REC Center would never have happened if not for your undaunting commitment to Summit Youth. You are truly the conscience of our community. Brett Herr and Phil Sankey have been with me through this journey. You have advised, cheered, and humbled me every step of the way. What more can a friend ask for? Speaking of humbling, my family. You have put up with this love affair I’ve had with this city, and there are just no words to say how to say thank you. I can only say I hope I have led by example for my boys to see that no matter how small you can make your little piece of earth a better place, you have that obligation. And mayor and council, thank you, and thank you all that you’re doing for the best small city in America. Thank you.
So now going back to the agenda, for those of you who are following, we’re going to do our ceremonial award. We’ll do, after the presentation, and then we’ll take a little bit of a break if folks want to leave, and then we’ll do public comments. So Madam Mayor, the ceremonial award.
Thank you. And also, the Union County is going to have a demonstration.
Right.
But if you want to stay and find out how these new machines work, you can do that too.
Yeah, no, that’s why we’ll do the presentation for Union County, and then we’ll take a break.
Okay. Sorry. Whereas the City of Summit is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting in Summit, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas home fires killed 2,630 people in the United States in 2017, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 357,000 home fires. And whereas the majority of U.S. fire deaths, four out of five, occur at home each year, and the fire death rate per 1,000 homes fires reported to fire departments was 4% higher in 2017 than in 1980. And whereas when smoke alarms sound, Summit residents may have less than two minutes to escape to safety, and residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive the fire. And whereas Summit residents should make a home escape plan, drawing a map of each level of the home, showing all doors and windows, and should practice the home fire escape plan drill using different ways out with everyone in the household, including visitors, during the day and night at least twice a year. And whereas Summit residents should teach children to escape on their own in case adults cannot help them, making sure everyone in the home knows how to dial 911 or the local emergency number from a cell phone or a neighbor’s phone. And whereas Summit residents in a real emergency should get low and go under the smoke to get out quickly and stay up, never going back inside the home for pets or things. And whereas Summit residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take action to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2019 Fire Prevention Week theme, “Not Every Hero Wears a Cape: Plan and Practice Your Escape,” that effectively serves to remind us that we need to take personal steps to increase our safety from fire. Now therefore, I nor a rarest mayor of Summit to hereby proclaim October 6 through 12, 2019, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city. And I urge all the people of Summit to be aware of their surroundings, look for available ways out in the event of a fire or other emergency, respond when the smoke alarm sounds by exiting the building immediately, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Summit’s fire and emergency services during Fire Prevention Week 2019. A witness whereof I hereon to set my hand and have caused to seal the City of Summit to be affixed this second day of October in the year 2019.
Members of the fire department are continuing to build on a theme that we started last year, just teaching the kids fundamentals of home escape planning so that they can go home to their families and practice it. We’ll be, all month long, we have many programs scheduled, and we welcome anybody to the firehouse for additional public fire safety education training. Thank you.
I had a long speech prepared, but both the mayor and the city administrator took a wind out of my sails.
That’s our job.
Did a perfect job. Fire Prevention Week, we have a ceremony going on down in Emmitsburg, Maryland, at the National Fire Academy. To coincide with that, on Sunday, we’re having a little ceremony at the firehouse at 10 o’clock called Bells Across America. If you’re around, stop in. You’ll see a little bit of what goes on at the firehouse. So thank you for supporting us in that effort, and thank you for the proclamation this week, or for Fire Prevention Week. And also, I would be remiss if I didn’t mention that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. So you’ll see firefighters around town wearing polo shirts. So give them a thumbs up when you see them, and come November 1, the pink shirts go away. So give them a thumbs up. So thank you very much.
So the next thing is a demonstration of the new voting machines, and we welcome Nicole Dorado, the Administrator of the Union County Board of Elections to vote Summit, and thank her for coming in to show us how the new voting machines will work.
Thank you, and thank you for having me, mayor, members of the council, Mr. Administrator, Madam Clerk. For the first time in 20 years, Union County is investing in its elections infrastructure, and we are so proud to be rolling out the Express Vote XL in Union County. Our rollout will be completed with this year’s general election in preparation and ahead of the 2020 presidential election. The Express Vote XL marries the technology of a touchscreen with a voter-verified paper audit trail, so that’s the paper backup that everybody in election security is talking about. We do audits, we do recounts, and if there was ever a concern, we can always go back to the paper and verify the election results. We’re here to do a demonstration. We are outside in the lobby. We have many other demonstrations. We’ll be at the Summit Community Center on October 10, from 9:00 to 11:30; at the Chestnut Street Housing Complex on October 22, from 3:00 to 7; the Summit Free Library on October 29, from 3:00 to 7. From January to the general election of this year, we’ll have participated in or organized close to 300 voter outreach events. So we are doing everything we can to make sure that our voters are educated. We are trying to make this process transparent and open so people can feel comfortable about the change. I’m going to ask Robinson to stand up. So when we take the machine on the road, we have, I play the role of Pat Sajak, and Robinson plays the role of Hannah White. Typically, there’s no microphone over there, and I know most of the residents here are not here to see me, but I’m so happy to have this captive audience, so thank you. So when the voter approaches, when they go into their polling location to vote, they will go see their table, the district board workers working the table, and sign in as they always have. They will receive their voting authority slip as they always have. When they approach the voting machine, of course, we have the curtains up right now so you can see, but the curtains will be down, and the voters will have their privacy. They’ll give their voting authority slip to the machine attendant, and the machine attendant is going to show the ballot card to the voter, that there is absolutely nothing on the ballot card. The ballot card is what activates the machine, and then it will become the voter-verified paper audit trail. So in a primary election, the first screen that we’ll see is not this one. The first one you’re going to see is Democrat or Republican. So in a primary election, the poll worker will activate the proper party ballot for you. The poll worker has always done this. It used to be on the little panel on the side of the machine, but now it’s on the screen. Everything is on the screen. And after that, the poll worker will step away, and in bilingual districts, you’re going to be prompted to select your language. English is the default language selected, as you can see at the green box. So the voter will select their language and hit Start Voting. You will notice the ballot looks like it has always looked. It mirrors the sample ballot that the voters will receive seven to 10 days prior to Election Day, and you’re pretty much making your selections the same way, except you don’t have to feel around for the little button to get the X under the box. What we are telling our voters is to aim for the name. So the candidate who you wish to vote for, you just press their name, and the box turns green. If you decide to change your selection, you press it again, and it deselects that person, and you can choose someone else. Should the voter choose to write in a candidate, they would select the contest under the Personal Choice column, and a keyboard comes up on the screen, type it in, and it’s, the name is actually populated on the ballot. So as we have in the general election, you’ll have your general election ballot. There is a state question on this year, and, no school board?
No school board.
No school board, sorry. Okay. So then at this point, you won’t have a school board election. Spreading rumors. And at this point, the voter is going to press the green button to select, to print their voter-verified paper audit trail. The machine is very intuitive, and it’s going to prompt the voter every step of the way. So at this point, the voter is selected, is asked, are you sure you’re ready to print, or do you want to go back? Say they forgot to vote for the question, they can go back at this point with no problem. And we’re going to hit the audit trail, and now we’re going to print. So this is what all the hubbub is about in election security, the voter-verified paper audit trail. This is where the voter This is where the voter gets to see exactly every selection they've made on the piece of paper, and they verify it, and then they cast a vote. And that's it. And they voted. So, we did kind of a study when we did our rollout in Westfield in 2018, the general election, and on average, it was about 30 to 40 seconds that the voter was in the voting booth. We had long lines, but there were long lines across the country. It wasn't because we rolled out a new machine in Westfield. Election days are not perfect, but our primary election this year, where we rolled out nine towns, was about as perfect as an election day as we can expect. We had 176 districts using the new machine in the primary, and will be completely rolled out in the general. And I'd be very happy to entertain any questions.
Great. Does anybody have any questions? Does anybody, does anybody from the audience have any questions?
Where were these machines manufactured?
Omaha. Nebraska.
That China or Nebraska?
No, sir. I appreciate the comments, absolutely.
Anybody else have a question? Okay.
Just one quick thing.
Sure.
So they're never connected to the internet, correct?
No. No, these machines are never connected to the internet. The computer that programs the machines is not connected to the internet, and it's not connected to a network that is connected to the internet. For the purposes of reading election results on election night, I've worked with the county clerk. We secured Hava grant funding, actually, to have a T1 line installed with firewalls on both sides and MFAs to secure our reading results. So we know on election night, there are only five computers on the network line. So what we've done is we'll be reading in Scotch Plains at our warehouse, and in the county clerk's office in Elizabeth. We'll bifurcate the county. Election results will, perhaps they'll be a little bit slower, because previously, the county clerk read in four off-site locations. So now it's two, but we know that the system is secure.
Amanda, you want to come?
What if somebody needs a provisional ballot?
If somebody needs a provisional ballot, provisional ballots are still available at the voting location, so that would be if you got a vote-by-mail ballot and you didn't vote it. If your name wasn't in the poll book, you know, that option is still available to voters.
So it's not in the machine, and it's done right on the, it's paper?
Yes, it is paper. Provisional basically means we're not sure if the voter is entitled to vote, so we're giving them the opportunity, and then we investigate when it comes back to the office.
Great. Yes, sir.
Is there still a cartridge in the machine that gets delivered to a central location where it's read?
It is no longer the cartridge. That was very difficult to get out if there are any poll workers in the audience. It's a USB stick, and it pops right out, and it goes into a secure pouch that goes back to the municipal clerk's office on election night. It is escorted by a sheriff's officer from the municipal clerk's office to the reading location.
Marjorie, go ahead.
And where does the paper trail go?
So the paper, bless you. The paper is also escorted back on election night. We're using county police to assist with that detail, and the paper, along with the machines, are impounded for the 17-day impoundment period.
So the paper travels separately from the stick, then?
It does. Yes.
Anybody else have any questions? Well, thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
So this election coming up in November, every polling place in Summit will have these kinds of machines.
They will.
And, and the poll workers, I assume, will be trained much beforehand?
We start training Saturday, actually, in Summit, and we are hosting 33 training sessions for the general election, and what we found in the primary was poll workers were coming to two and three and four sessions, just to make sure that they knew how to handle the machine. So, if anybody's watching, I appreciate their dedication because it's important. So we are starting, anybody can come to any one of our 33 demonstrations to our poll worker training, you know, any of the poll workers can come to any one, so it should be convenient, and it is mandatory for all the poll workers working.
Great. Thank you very much again. Thank you both for coming in. We really appreciate.
Council President?
Yes, ma'am.
May I just ask a favor?
Sure.
Nicole, can you just announce the change for the voters who voted at Brayton School?
Uh, we, yes, they're now moving to the Cornog Field House. I forgot the address, Rosie, I'm sorry.
It's on Myrtle Avenue.
Okay.
That's all they need to know. But anyone who voted or is registered to vote at Brayton School will now go to Cornog, which is right next door.
We will be mailing postcards to every voter, like the second week in October, they'll go out. They go out sooner, people will not pay attention to it.
You know, people get the ballot?
And it will be on the sample ballot, yes.
Okay. Great.
And the instructions for the new voting machine will also be on the sample ballot, so I encourage everybody to read them before they go to the polls.
Wonderful. Okay. Oh, Mark, did you?
Five Myrtle?
It's Five Myrtle. Five Myrtle.
Five, okay. Thanks, Mark. Okay, thank you very much again. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Lee.
All right. We are, we're at the point in our, in our agenda for public comments, if, I know there are a lot of folks here that probably want to speak about the ordinance that we have for hearing, but if, if people want to leave right now, they could, but if somebody has a public comment on a topic that's not on the agenda, this is the time to come up. I know we have a new JCPN L rep, Carol Bianchi. Carol, do you want to come up, say hello to everyone and?
I'll be very quick, I promise. Good evening, and thank you for having me come up. I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Carol Bianchi. I'm your new JCPN L External Affairs Consultant, and I just wanted you to know that I am here for whatever you need, and I left my business cards with Rosemary earlier today, and I just wanted to let you know what the role of the External Affairs Person is, which is not just to work with your mayor and council when there's outages, but to work also on being a partner in the community, and to work on projects. So I've worked closely, as I said, with your mayor, but also with your, with Paul Cascades and your communications person, Amy, and your administrator. So, again, I'm here as a resource, and you have my phone number, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Thanks very much, Carol.
Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome to Summit.
Thank you very much.
And Carol, thank you. I know you've done a lot recently with Paul with the lights in the library parking lot, so.
We're working on it, Mayor.
I know you are. It's been a long time coming, and I appreciate your diligence.
It is.
And Paul's working with you.
We're committed to it. Thank you.
Okay, great. Now, does anyone else have any comments about a topic that's not on the agenda? Otherwise, we'll move forward with the agenda. Okay, so we have one ordinance for hearing. It's Law and Labor 19-3199. Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance for hearing?
An ordinance amending and supplementing the code, Chapter 10, Animal Control, to add a new section to prohibit the retail sale of dogs and cats.
Okay. Councilwoman Bowman.
Thank you, Council President. As was described, this ordinance is, is here for, for hearing, and, and basically, the basics are that we will be prohibiting the retail sales of dogs and cats through, through various pet establishments. This retail sale will assist in decreasing the animals housed in shelters and animal rescue organizations, and, but yet we will still allow pet adoptions to take place in the, in the town. Summit has three storefront businesses that focus on pets, a daycare, a pet groomer, and a pet store. I spoke with the pet store owner, and they do not sell pets and are currently in support of this ordinance, and they support all pet adoptions. I move this ordinance for hearing.
I second.
Okay, so now the hearing is open, so let me just, before we open up to the public for, for comments, a couple of things. We've gotten a lot of emails, certainly I have, I'm sure everyone on council has, we've seen them. Let me just set the ground rules for, for how we do these things. Please come up to the microphone, state your name, your address. You have three minutes to speak. What I ask, or we collectively ask, is that if you hear the comment already and you think that it's been adequately addressed, it's no reason to come up and say the same thing again. It's fine to come up and say "me too," that's, that's okay. But, but, you know, let's just try to move so we don't all stay here all evening long. The other thing, as you could, for those of you who are not from Summit, but are absolutely welcome to speak, if you haven't sensed it, you probably should, which is, the way we do things here in Summit is that we don't necessarily argue with each other. We're all adults here. We expect that if our children were watching, they would watch us and be proud of how we conduct ourselves. That means nobody shouts, yells, has a back and forth with each other, accuses each other of something. We make our points. Everybody gets to be heard. Nobody gets interrupted, and then we go ahead and deliberate. Okay? So with that, I open it up, first for council members, if they want to speak towards this. If not, we'll open it up to the public. Anyone? Hey, members of the public, anyone wanting to speak about this? If nobody speaks, I'll just shut it, and we'll just go to the vote. I'll tell you right now. That's it, this is how these things are done.
Hi, I'm Dr. Laura Armenti. I'm a veterinarian, originally from Madison, actually, but I have good friends in Summit, and somebody who's very passionate about adopting pets, so she asked me to come and speak on behalf of medical profession.
Could you just give your address, please?
Oh, sure. 10 Ashland Road, Madison, New Jersey.
Thank you.
And, so, I'm gonna say that I support the ordinance to not sell pets in retail from the perspective of, first of all, there is an absolute overpopulation of animals, as I'm sure many of you are aware, and they do need homes. We, if we were supporting the sale of these pets that most likely are coming from pet mills or puppy mills, we would be supporting animal abuse, essentially, because they're kept in horrible conditions. I can tell you that anyone that I saw coming from these pet stores, without a doubt, had some sort of medical condition, whether it was eye infections, upper respiratory infections, even congenital defects, because the amount of inbreeding that happens at these puppy mills. You're just breeding horrible genetic, you know, breeding horrible genes into the gene pool, or horrible specimens, for lack of a better word. So, I also think for the, from a consumer standpoint, you're just basically allowing people to purchase sick animals that they're then gonna have to do even more medical care for, which is very frustrating, too, from a financial standpoint, and frustrating for me to see these animals being abused, but also then my clients being upset that now they've been essentially sold a defected animal. So, furthermore, I just want to say that I absolutely support that, at this point, it should only be pets that are filling up these shelters and that need homes, and most of them are actually mutts, which tend to be genetically more diverse, and therefore much healthier pets anyway. So again, as far as, from a consumer standpoint, you're getting a better product, and you're gonna end up with a pet that lives much longer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ike, come on.
Well, good evening, Mayor Raidust, and members of the Summit Common Council. My name is Ike Welsh. I'm here to speak this evening as a resident of this town, as well as a responsible citizen. I support this ordinance. From my perspective, it is time for Summit to join the 100-plus communities in our state who've already passed this measure. We need to come down on the ethical side of this issue by helping to put an end to consumer demand for puppy mill dogs. This ordinance is a firm statement that the values of Summit do not include endorsing cruelty in out-of-state breeding facilities. This measure is the surest way to turn off the faucet, so to speak, of a puppy mill industry that is based upon profit and unfortunately, a lack of accountability. My two young daughters, both of whom are absolute pet lovers, deserve to know that our community is concerned and willing to do what it can to provide for the ethical treatment of the animals that we love. Thank you.
Thank you, Ike. Guys, if I could ask you, there's no need to clap, please, because, first of all, just take more time. We know there's, there's people who support the ordinance. I, we got it, but I think it just, just in fairness, just, we can just move it along. Thank you. Come on up, please.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Brian Hackett. I'm the New Jersey State Director with the Humane Society of the United States. I am a New Jersey resident. Our headquarters is 700 Professional Drive in Gaithersburg, Maryland. I just want to be very brief, and thank you on behalf of our members and supporters in Summit and throughout the state. Three quick facts for you, for the record. This ordinance has been passed hundreds of times throughout the country by both Democratic and Republican-controlled towns. It's a pro-business measure. It's a consumer protection measure. It does not prevent anyone from going to a responsible breeder who would never sell to or through a pet shop. Responsible breeders sell directly to the consumer. They care about the dog just as much as they care about the customer, and this is a very sound ordinance. It's been upheld in courts all around the country, and it's really, truly a win-win-win for everyone involved. The shelters, the community, the animals, businesses. Believe it or not, 24 out of the 25 largest pet retailers in the country refuse to sell cats and dogs. So when you go into a PetSmart or a Petco, for example, those are all rescue animals. So, it's certainly a pro-business trend that is, and a pro-animal trend that we're very happy to see many towns supporting. So thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. Okay. Anyone else? Yes, sir, come on up.
Hi, my, excuse me. My name's Larry Cohen. I live in Fanwood, New Jersey. I'm a volunteer legislative coordinator with the Humane Society of the United States. Having first brought this idea up to Matt, I just wanted to come up and thank you for considering it, urge you to pass it, and President Nate, do I want to, if I may, some of the times that we have issues with towns, it's because the councils themselves don't do the research, don't do their homework, turn it into a right versus left issue when it's really just an animal cruelty issue. I'm, I gotta say, I'm personally proud to see the research and the education that this council has done. I didn't doubt it. As a former employee of this town, I never doubted that it would happen, and I'm confident in what your decision will be. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Madeline Gould, if you did not know already. My mother actually talked to me about this decision a couple days ago, and I actually brought my best friend here, and she's gonna be embarrassed because I just called her out, but I am 18 years old, and I am the new voice of the Summit citizenship, and I'd like to say for everyone that I completely support your decision, and I support my mother and what she believes. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madeline.
Anyone else? All right. With that, I'll consider the public portion of the hearing closed, and it's up to members of council if they want to discuss this any further. So anybody? Beth?
I just want to say this, a short comment, and we really appreciate everyone coming out tonight. This issue was first brought to both Matt and I. I know maybe other members of councils by residents of Summit who were concerned about this issue. We also heard from a lot of our children in our community through the 8th grade civics project, and for the young lady who was mayor for a day, that this was an issue that some of the youth in the community were concerned about. We have received a lot of emails, both for and against, but I will note, like, that all of the Summit residents who wrote to me, at least, were in favor of this, and I am really grateful to see so many people here. When issues come up and we decide these things, we really do value the opinions of our residents and value your input, and the fact that so many of you cared enough to come to the meeting and spend your time. As we spoke about earlier with Jordan, that's our most precious commodity, to, to show that you care about what's going on and care about the issues that are facing our community is really valuable to us. So for everyone that took the time to call, stopped me on the street, emailed us, and to come tonight, I want to thank you for caring and being involved and showing your support on, on these issues. So, thank you.
Thank you. Marjorie.
I agree with everything that Councilwoman Little just said. I wanted to also clarify, because there were some questions that came up on social media about why now, why are we doing this? And this is an opportunity right now, because we don't have any businesses currently in town who are selling pets, so all of the pet supply, pet service companies or stores are either providing supplies for pets or services for pets, so, and there is also a So, and there is also, to my knowledge, no one who's coming forward and saying they want to open a business like this. This is the time to do it when we don't have an issue with a business that has some expectations of what, you know, what they should be allowed to do in town. And I think there also have been some towns that have found that they have pet stores and have had problems and have not had the tools or the ability to make changes. So this is, we're being proactive here because now is the time to do this, and I think this is the right thing to do. And again, I have also received only positive comments from Summit residents. So thank you all for coming out.
Anyone else? Mike?
Yeah, I have a bit of a different view. In fact, I voted no to introduce this ordinance two weeks ago. It's the first time I've ever voted not to talk about something because I really feel strongly that we should have nothing to do with this. This is not something that local government needs to be involved with. Sending ethical, you know, ethical statements about puppy mills? That's not our job here at Summit. I mean, we have things that we should be looking at outside of presupposing that store owners who might come in here are unlike, what was the comment that was? Responsible breeders? That they're not responsible. That's the assumption that we're going to get from people who come in here. You know, I looked at this. New Jersey has a law. They regulate pet stores. You have to have a sign up that your pets are from U.S. Department of Agriculture-approved breeders. Now, you can say all you want that, oh, they don't do a good job, you know, that people skirt that. There are rules, the federal government has to give these breeders a stamp of approval before any pet store in New Jersey can purchase these things. Now, I'm sure that there are some pet stores that don't do a good job by this, but there are county officials who go and they check these stores out. So there are enforcement mechanisms on the books already. My point is, is that there are three levels of government that are already doing all this stuff. I'm completely against puppy mill puppies. Don't get me wrong. Horrible, we shouldn't have it, but we are passing a law. This is a law banning something we don't even have in town. We are spending resources. People are talking about this, we're going to have to enforce this thing now. We should be passing a resolution saying that this council despises puppy mills, hates them, is ethically and morally outraged by them, and it should be a resolution. It should not be a law. That's not what this body should be doing by any stretch of the imagination. So like I said, I mean, I just, one, we don't have these stores in here, and as I said, you know, we can say, oh, we're going to head off any bad actors that come in, but we're really limiting consumer choice. Someone mentioned that, you know, the big national brands don't sell puppies anyways. Great! So if stores don't want to do that because they think that they can have a better presence than Summit, God bless them. But if, my, my understanding is for most store owners, people who get into the furniture businesses because they love design, people who sell skateboards, love skateboards, usually people who are in a business love the things that they're doing. Most pet store owners, my guess is, love animals. So, you know, to presuppose that someone who wants to set up shop here in Summit is unethical, is going to be going around trying to buy bad puppies, when there's systems in place at the federal, state, and county level is just wrong, and we shouldn't even be going here presupposing outcomes, we have no idea. And so that's a long-winded way, just to say again, I don't even know why we're talking about this. Thank you, Mike. Okay. Greg?
So I think there's two main focuses here, and I'll be really quick about it. One is the moral argument, which I think I feel pretty confident supporting because I feel like we're on the right side of the moral argument of this. The other is the financial argument, and I think there is an extremely strong case to be made that it's absolutely the obligation of the local government to protect our taxpayers. And this is the right thing to do because historically, we've seen in other communities that it could cost tens of thousands to the municipality if these pet stores are doing the wrong thing, and it could cost individual taxpayers as well. So this is the right thing to do because it's proactive and because the people of Summit have said that they want it. So that's why I'm supporting it.
Thank you. Greg? Anyone else? So let me, let me close by at least giving my thoughts about this. I take very seriously Mike's, Councilman McTiernan's objection and the reason for it. I think there is a argument that we should not, we certainly shouldn't be presupposing that, you know, just because a store comes in and wants to have cats or dogs to sell that they come from sources that are not reputable. I think one could make an argument that I'm sure there's shelters and emails that I've gotten, certainly the people from, you know, maybe they're outside of the community, but nonetheless, their emails, you know, they'll make the argument, they have made the argument that, okay, that there are shelters that have problems, and they'll give you examples of shelters that have problems. And I take in face value that those are accurate reports and for what it's worth. So it's not to ascribe that one side is necessarily always good and the other side is necessarily always bad. Then the question comes up, so if you, if you take away that argument, is the role of government to regulate? That's what this comes down to. Proactively regulate, Councilwoman Vartan says, as a prophylactic, before we have, and as Councilwoman Fox said, before we have any stores, should we do anything about it to regulate the business environment? And I guess the way I analogize this situation is we're having a debate in the state about what to do with cannabis, right? And so the question that comes up is should, should municipalities, if the state were to permit municipalities to have stores to sell recreational cannabis, what should a community do? And I'll tell you right now that we will, I assume, come to some decisions about whether or not we will regulate. So to me, at the end of the day, we already, we will go down that road. We will make decisions in those circumstances, and to me, this is no different. So to the point of, do we go into the business of regulating different types of businesses, what they can and cannot do as uses? We do. We do it on the current set of businesses because there are certain regulations about what businesses can and cannot do. And then there is, prophylactically, we will make decisions about what businesses can and cannot come into our town. So that's how I have come to the conclusion that I'm comfortable with this because it is true that one should not go as a local body very casually into the idea of saying, okay, well, we're going to knock out that business because we think morally that's objectionable. That's seven people deciding exactly what 22,000 other people should and should not be able to use. But we're elected. That's what we're here to do. We may be volunteers, we don't get paid for this, but we certainly go out in the community, talk to people, and get a sense of what our community values are and what we're going to stand up for or against. And that's what we're here to do. So with that analysis, I'll call for, I'll say that the hearing is closed, right? And we'll move the ordinance or file consideration. Madam Clerk, would you please read 19-3199?
An ordinance amending and supplementing the code, Chapter 10, Animal Control, to add a new section to prohibit the retail sale of dogs and cats.
Thank you, Council President. Ordinance 1933199, as we discussed, I would like to present that for our final consideration, the prohibiting of sale of dogs and cats.
My second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Gould?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. McTiernan?
Nay.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President and I do.
Aye. That passes. Okay. Moving, why don't we do this, since I sense that there's probably a fair number of people here that were here only for this purpose, why don't I call for a two-minute recess and then we will get back into session, okay? Back in session. We have an ordinance for introduction. Madam Clerk, would you please read 6690, please?
Amend Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-8, Parking, Establish Electric Vehicle Charging Station Rules and Fees.
Okay. Councilwoman Gould?
Yes, this is to, there are going to be two parking spots in the Broad Street, two parking spots in the Broad Street Lot and two parking spots in the DeForest. No, this is not it.
DeForest Lot. DeForest.
Oh, just the DeForest Lot, so sorry.
That was the original.
Yes, the original plan, so sorry. Two parking spots in the DeForest Lot, and this is to amend it so that these lots will be lined with green, there will be electric plug-ins for the cars.
Second it.
Thank you.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Gould?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. McTiernan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President and I do.
Aye. Just moving it along. Trying to be me. I was just moving it along. Okay. That's, and this will be heard on our next meeting on October 15th. For those who are following at home, as you know, we already did community programs number one. So now we're moving on to community programs number two. Councilwoman Gould?
Yes. Resolution 6689, authorize execution of grant agreement, NJDEP, it pays to plug in New Jersey's Workshop Electric Vehicle Charging Grant Program. This is to, this grant is to help pay for the electrical, the electrical plug-ins at the DeForest Lot.
Thank you. Second it. Okay. Any comments or questions from members of council? Mike?
Just a question. Is this, if we decide not to purchase the vehicle, does nothing happens with the grant?
It's not a vehicle. This is...
Oh, the charging stations. I'm sorry. But if we don't purchase the charging station, will anything happen with the grant?
Rita, why don't you come on up and explain, since the second and third both are related?
Good evening. Rita McDaniel, Parking Services Manager. To answer your question, Councilman McTiernan, yes, the part of the grant, even before we get any grant monies, we have to pass a resolution to accept the grant by council. Then the mayor kindly signs the forms, goes down to the state. But if we choose not to purchase it, then it's null and void because then we have 90 days from getting the grant paperwork back from the state to install it. Once it's installed, we send more paperwork back to the state confirming the installation, and then we would, then receive the grant monies of $6,000.
Any other questions or comments? Thanks, Rita. Sure.
Thank you.
Oh, Beth?
I just wanted to comment. I formally sat on this committee, and we were working on this with Council, former Councilwoman Ogden. So this has been a long process, and I just really want to commend you for going after a substantial portion of the cost with this grant. And we had talked about these grants being available. We, you know, you were working on it for a long time, so it's been a long process and coming, and I want to thank you for going after this funding.
Thank you. But just also keep in mind, if it is successful, and we hope that it will be, we feel it will, there are still more grants out there, so keep that in mind with redevelopment efforts that we could put more in in the future if you so desire. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to capital, community programs number two, Councilwoman Gould, I mean, three, sorry.
Number three, 6691, authorize state contract purchase, electrical vehicle charging station. This is for the actual charging station and with the grant that will offset the purchase of it.
Correct. Second. Sorry. Thank you. Any comments or questions from members of council? Mike?
Yeah. One, I know we obviously just introduced an ordinance that's talking about the fees on all this stuff, but I guess, to me, the two are related, right? Because we need to know, we need to know whether, what the fees are going to be to have any idea of what the break evens and the costs are before we purchase this thing. So one, I think we're putting the cart before the horse. We should know what the fees are, we should vote on them at least concurrently so we can have a discussion where we at least know what we're talking about as far as what the costs are going to be. Because right now, in theory, we don't know. We don't know that whether the ordinance is going to pass or not. But if this body does decide that we should vote on this today, then we should have a full discussion about what the fees are going to be around this. Because I have a lot of questions about what this is going to cost and how we've come up with the break evens in the ordinance that we're going to discuss in two weeks. That's my comment.
So we can either table this discussion for the next council and do it concurrently, which, I mean, I understand your point. I don't disagree with it. I think it's a fair point to say that. Or alternatively, basically, we have effectively a discussion about the ordinance because that's really where the fee structure is being discussed, and do it simultaneously. Now, I'm open, because we have, we have the benefit, as the agenda packet laid out, have the information about the fee structure. It's available to the public, obviously, also at that time. But the public, on the other hand, does not have an opportunity right now to speak about the fee structure. And so I don't think, in fairness, and this is my just thinking through the issue with all of you, I don't think it's in fairness to the public if we had a discussion about the fee structure without having the ability of the public to comment because they're not, this is an introduction. Rightfully, people aren't going to be here if they wanted to actually comment. So what I would say is, if everyone is so inclined, we'll table this for the next council meeting. It will not make any difference, I don't think, unless somebody says to me that the, getting the grant application has a specific deadline, or this is somehow one triggers the other, because I don't want to lose it based upon this issue, right? So as long as that's, and we're hearing from Rita, for those of you who are watching don't know, our Parking Services Director says that it will not make an impact, and so if we're all comfortable, we can vote to table it. All those in favor of table, oh, well, I guess I have to make a motion to table. Okay? So I'll make a motion to table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. It's tabled, so we will hear it next week, I mean, next, two weeks from now. So that moves us on to finance, and Councilwoman.
Thank you, Council President. We have one finance resolution tonight, number 6696, and this is to authorize issuance of the notes that essentially fund the bond ordinances that we passed back in June. So these are to fund the various bond ordinances that we approved for the capital budget, parking services, the purchase of Seater Street, et cetera. So I move this resolution for approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. Any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on, law and labor, we have two. Councilman Bowman?
Yes. Thank you, Council President. Resolution ID number 6656 is to extend intermittent sick leave with pay and without pay through December 31st for a DPW employee. As we discussed in closed session this afternoon, I move this resolution.
My second.
Okay. Any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, law and labor, number two.
Yes. ID number 6688 is to declare a vacancy in the Police Department, an administrative assistant. We have a retiree who is, after 18 years, retiring to pursue her, her pleasure, if you will. And as we discussed in closed session, this position is part of the budget, and we feel as though it is part of the budget, and therefore I move this resolution.
My second.
Okay. Any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or member, questions from members of the public? Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to capital projects, there's a series of capital projects. Councilwoman Fox?
Thank you, Council President. Capital Projects, number 1, 6706. This authorizes the submission of the amended 2019-2020 Greening Union County Grant Application. And this is, this is the Union County Grant for a match for planting trees. And we admitted, we originally submitted this grant for 100 trees this few months ago. With the passing of our beloved colleague, Councilmember Matt Gould, we are seeking the funding for 250 trees. we are seeking the funding for two-hundred-and-fifty trees. As you all know, Matt was passionate about planting trees, and we believe this is a fitting way to honor his memory. We will include the thirty-seven-thousand-five-hundred dollars in matching funds for these two-hundred-and-fifty trees in the twenty-twenty capital budget, if this is granted. I want to thank the Union County Freeholders for their help in funding these additional trees in Matt's memory. I move this resolution.
Second.
Okay, any comments or questions from members of council? Stephanie?
I just want to thank the council and thank Union County. And this was definitely something that Matthew talked about on a regular basis. If you could plant a thousand trees every day, he would have been even more thrilled. But the fact that we're getting two-hundred-and-fifty, I'm jumping out of my chair in excitement, quietly by myself. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Stephanie. And Paul, do you want to come up and talk, because I think we are trying to get to a thousand within four years, yes?
Sure, so this resolution, as Councilwoman Fox mentioned, it is to amend our Greening Union County Grant from one-hundred to two-hundred-and-fifty trees. And prior to the untimely passing of Councilwoman Gould, we had many discussions in committee about trees and the preserving of our urban forest here. And Councilman Gould felt that if we could plant a million trees, he would have liked to reach that goal. But we did talk a lot about planting locations and environment, and we thought that it would be a great initiative to move one of his passions. He was a very big champion of preserving the forest. And as a tribute to him, to plant a thousand trees over a four-year period. So we did reach out to the county to ask them if they could, if we would be able to amend our grant application, and they did support it. So that's the resolution that is in front of you. And as I did mention to Councilwoman Gould, Matt and I had several, several discussions on preserving the urban canopy and tree species, and great discussions on it. So as a tribute to him, I'm hoping you'll consider this resolution to amend the amount to two-hundred-and-fifty this year.
Thank you very much, Paul. I join in saying thank you to the county freeholders, especially Freeholder Al Marabella, who championed this in the county. So we appreciate his efforts in getting this done. I appreciate the fact, Department of Community Services, Paul, and his team of, you know, figuring this out in such short notice and getting this all done. We all know Matt championed this issue, but it's also the case that, you know, as we all know, the Environmental Commission came in, spoke about the reduction in the tree canopy that has occurred in this town. We've had major, major storms that have come through, taken out a lot of trees. When we had our discussion about our, our plan that we have for the amount of trees, we could see the decrease between, I mean, the variation between the number of trees that were taken down and the number of trees planted. And so in a way, we are just simply trying to catch back up to what we need to do. And so I think it is, this is a really nice thing that we're doing here tonight. So all.
Councilperson, one second. As a liaison to the shade tree, you know, I know that we have had this conversation, and I think it's, it's moving in the right direction. And I also want to use this opportunity to plug that we've had two of our training sessions, the Shade Tree has, to, that were well received, that we have two more in the next couple of weeks. So, you know, it's continuing the journey, if you will.
Thank you, Stephen, absolutely, I was remiss in not mentioning the Shade Tree Commission, because those guys, and, and, folks. Gals, folks, that's what I was going to correct myself. Those folks are instrumental in trying to preserve our tree canopy. Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, moving on, capital projects number two, Councilwoman Fox.
Thank you, Council President. Resolution two, six-six-eight-six. This resolution amends the professional services agreement with Topology, the planning consultant for Broad Street West redevelopment. The original agreement was approved on July tenth, twenty-eighteen, for an amount not to exceed seventy-one thousand dollars. This was for phase two of the project, and it covered tasks completed in the period of time between the designation as an area in need of redevelopment, and it was, and was completed with the completion of the redevelopment plan. And during that period, the city and the Redevelopment Steering Committee sought additional work from Topology for additional public outreach and presentations, and also follow-up with potential developers, among other things. And this work exceeded the original cost estimate by thirty-eight thousand, eight-hundred-twenty-eight dollars and fifty-one cents. The city can seek reimbursement of these fees through redevelopment, at the point where we reach a redevelopment agreement with the developer in the future. I move that we, that, I move this resolution.
Second.
Any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Further discussion? Let me just say, for those who are watching and listening, I'm sure you, some of you may be wondering where we are in the redevelopment process. We are still in the midst of evaluating proposals and plans that we've received from developers. We're still in the midst of having discussions with various developers to see who we want to move forward with as we go down this road. There are issues dealing with sequencing and other aspects of this project that we need to get right in order to figure out how everything will work out. There are multiple people on this dais and outside of this dais who are involved in all of those discussions in order to get it done. It is going to be, from my perspective, probably, I probably had some naivete about how long this process will take. It's going to take longer, Madame Mayor kept on telling me, it's going to take longer than you think. She's absolutely right. It's going to take longer than I certainly envisioned. But we will work towards getting a result that will be of benefit for this community. And we will get there in the time that will be necessary to get there. So I just want to give folks a heads up, that it's not simply that we're passing this tonight, but there is ongoing work, it's involved, lots of people involved in this, and it's taking some time. So with that, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, moving on to number three, capital projects.
Thank you, Council President. Six-six-four-five, this resolution authorizes funding for additional work performed as part of the Locust Culvert Replacement Project. And this was, and this was to relocate a sanitary sewer main. And basically, in twenty-fourteen, council entered into, executed an agreement with Union County to fund the cost of sanitary sewer upgrades during this project. And basically, the sewer line was located above the stream bed and was exposed within the culvert wall. And the city's portion of the project was to relocate the sanitary sewer main below the stream bed, because that's a more secure place for a sanitary sewer line to be. In the process, when this was all opened up, we discovered the storm sewer line was exposed and began collapsing. So we had to pay an additional fifty-two-thousand-four-hundred-nineteen dollars to the county to fix that defect as part of the project. So the county has now closed out the project and is seeking reimbursement. This can be funded under the Sewer Utilities Capital Account. I move this resolution.
Second.
So this is actually capital projects number four. So we skipped three, but that's fine, we'll go back to three, yes.
Really? Did I mess that up?
Yes. Yeah, but that's all right.
Oh, it's different in the packet.
Oh, okay, okay.
All right, so that was four.
Okay, that was four, but does anyone have questions on capital project number four? Okay, any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Going back to number three.
Okay, so that's six-six-eight-five. This amends a professional services agreement for the community center renovation project. And it's five-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars in additional materials testing and inspection service fees. So in twenty-seventeen, council awarded a contract in an amount not to exceed thirty thousand to Atlantic Engineering Laboratories to complete materials testing during the renovation of the community center. During the project closed out, it became clear that, that the contract had, was exceeded by five-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars due to additional soil testing. This was required due to some unforeseen conditions on the site. And the final cost of the contract will now be amended to thirty-thousand-five-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars and ten cents, so we can finalize the work with the vendor. I move this resolution.
Second.
Okay, any comments or questions from members of council? Any, any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, capital projects number five.
Okay, this one is five, six-six-two-one, and it's authorizing the purchase of a Ford four-fifty, F-four-fifty truck with a snowplow from the Morris County Union Cooperative Pricing Council. This truck is also known as a Mason Dump Truck, so when we've talked about the capital budget, I think that's what we've called it. This replaces a similar two-thousand-eight Ford F-four-fifty, and it's used in the daily operations of the Sewer Utility and Maintenance Unit. It's also an essential vehicle in our snow removal program. The old two-thousand-eight Ford will be sold on municipal. This will be funded out of the twenty-nineteen Sewer Utility Capital Budget, and this completes the twenty-nineteen Capital Budget vehicle purchases for the Department of Community Services. I move this resolution.
Second.
Okay, any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Great, now we have two items for discussion, what's called the Discussion Action or Referral, or DAR. They're both out of community programs. If either Councilwoman Gould or Councilwoman Bartan, do you want to talk about it tonight? Do you want to defer it to another night? What do you guys?
So.
Go ahead.
You can go ahead.
Am I going or you go?
So we can, yeah, go ahead.
Do you want me to call on one of you without making it easier?
Councilwoman Gould has it.
Yes, okay.
Thank you. This is six-six-zero-eight, the Summit Downtown Inc. request for holiday parking. This was so that there would be a period of time in the parking lots that residents, as well as customers coming into town, would have free parking. Do you want to add to that?
So I think the course of action, the recommendation from our committee is going to be that the council consider the updated memo from SDI at our, at our next meeting.
Okay, and just so everybody's clear, right, I'm trying to do this for memory, the updated memo is, relates to the ninety-minute meters?
Yes.
Right, and it says that it is four hours, no, how many?
You want to come up? Rita, come on up, tell, why don't you tell us, everybody, so this way everybody's ready. Thank you.
That's right, that's the DeForest lot.
Again, Rita McDaniel, Parking Services Manager. The updated memo includes free ninety-minute meters in the downtown, the Bank Street Lot, which is ninety minutes, and the ground level of the Tier Garage, which is two hours. The DeForest lots are off the table. But also, SDI needs to supply council a marketing plan.
Right, and, and so.
And a contribution.
Just so, so it's clear, there's been discussions in the past, and we can certainly talk about it tonight, if people want to, which is that should the DeForest lots be included as free? In this case, it is not. And then SDI is committing to give three thousand dollars, correct, for the city. And in the past, it had been tied to specifically doing it for marketing, or they would, that, they would use it for marketing, but in this case, it is that it is generally available to the city. But that they also will provide a marketing plan, so that part of that money could be used for those purposes.
That's correct.
Is that a fair way of describing it? Okay, so if people want to, this is, if people, before it comes up in front of council at the next council meeting, people want to have any further discussion or thoughts that they want to communicate to the community programs, I mean, committee or to Rita, this is our chance, folks, so if anybody wants to talk about it.
Well, Rita, well, in the, in the meeting, we discussed that it was very important to all of us that there was a marketing plan that was presented. And that I felt that before moving forward, we needed to see that. Besides just free advertising.
Last year, it was just ads that they placed on Facebook.
Right. I was very concerned that that was all that they were going to do. And I wanted to hear more.
Correct, we have, we expressed that to SDI, we have not seen a marketing plan to date. I did provide my committee members advertising costs for the collection for the Thanksgiving issue and the December issue, just to get a feel of what those might cost. And they do advertise SDI within that magazine for going to a lot of households in the surrounding towns. But again, SDI needs to provide that to council, for council to make a decision on this.
Okay, so, but just so we're all clear, if this comes up for the next council meeting, we will not have a marketing plan at that time, right?
That's up to SDI, sir.
They might, they know that they're expected to give us a marketing plan ASAP.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Very good, thank you, Rita. You may want to just stay up there for a second, in case, the second one also deals with parking. But, but let's see, does anybody, do Stephanie or Greg, do you guys want to address the second issue of the parking, so meter on Summit Avenue?
Sure, so during, I'll take this one, if you don't mind. So during the construction of, reconstruction, rather, of the new Darlington apartment complex at one-twenty-three through one-twenty-seven Summit Avenue, there are two separate requests that are being made in a letter to Parking Services. One is to bag for an extended period of time a meter on the street, and the second is to permanently remove one of the metered spaces. I, I think we need to discuss this further in the, in the Parking Services Committee, and we'll make a recommendation to council after the next meeting.
Okay.
Agreed.
Okay, so you guys aren't ready to have any further discussion tonight?
Correct.
Okay. Let me ask this, is there, is there some sense of when the timing is, or when, do these, do the folks who are making the requests need a response by a certain date?
My understanding is they were going to be at this meeting. I did notify them that it was going to be discussed by council at this meeting.
Oh, okay.
And I don't know why no one's representing their request. The one request to have, what they're looking for is to have the bagged, normal bagged meter fee reduced. Council has in previous years, for a long, anything, six months or more, they have granted a reduction in the daily fee, which is twenty-five dollars per meter, per day, for six days per week. So it can become costly when someone's doing a new, a large project that could go for an extended period of time. In the past, council has granted developers bringing that fee down to ten dollars per day, per meter, for six days per week. So that's the one request. The other request is permanently remove. This same developer, a few years ago, came to have, I believe it was nine meters removed at that time. Because the downtown was suffering, the council at that time felt to spark development downtown, agreed that that developer did not have to pay the city for the loss of revenue for ever and ever, for those meters. Now they're requesting again for the removal of one. I did speak to them to try to see if they would like to offer some sort of compensation to the city. They're looking for the council to give a recommendation as to what the council feels they should or shouldn't. So that's the way I left the conversation with them. Number three is the noise ordinance waiver, which has already been handled through the City Administrative Service Office with the new process for that.
Okay.
So I'm just curious, has that been approved, they're starting at seven AM?
Okay, well, we can discuss that, let's take a step, let's just first deal with the, with the meters. Can I just get a clarification?
Sure.
So there's two separate meter issues. There is one meter that they want a reduction in fees.
Correct.
For, and then, but a separate meter, not the same meter that they're going to get a reduction, they want a separate meter completely removed.
Correct.
And those are the two issues, just so, thank you, that's just for clarification. Marjorie, go ahead.
Can you explain what the revenue on average would be for a meter in this area?
Sure, it's about a thousand dollars per year. So normally, you would estimate for twenty years, someone would, you know, a developer should pay for that loss of revenue. You're going to lose it forever, but usually, other towns give a twenty-year spectrum on it, say a thousand a year for twenty years.
Right, that's the bag fee, which is twenty-five dollars per space, but what
Right, but that's the bag fee, which is $25 per space, but what is it if we had an operational meter? Would we be making, is the bag fee sort of supposed to be equal to what it would cost?
Yes, throughout the day, correct.
If we weren't going to have the public parking?
Yes, because you have your turnover of, like, say, a 90-minute meter, you have that constant turnover. So, that's been on the books for 40 years, $25 per day.
But our fees have gone up, so the bag fee has not?
No. We're one of the highest ones around for a bag meter, at $25 per day.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mike?
I'm just looking through the DAR. What's the rationale for removing the meter? Why do they want it removed?
Well, because originally, there was a circular, from my understanding of the site plan, there's now going to be a circular driveway, and the way the entrances will work, it really needs to kind of be removed. And that was approved by the Planning Board, through the Planning Board process. However, they still need to have council approve it, and then also, there's the question of the loss of revenue. That's why it's also coming to council.
So, what the committee needs to discuss is that revenue, make a recommendation to council next time about that amount of revenue, and then discuss the bag fee.
Correct.
Well, I think maybe it would help the committee here, though, if we express collectively our opinion, because one of the options, as Rita said, is in the past, people have said, okay, you don't need to pay anything, right? And so, that's one of the, kind of, in my head at least, a threshold question, are we going to charge for it? And because, as you said in the past, the city, but we are at a different place.
Correct.
We have a shortage of parking. We just went through this issue with SDI, and I know, you know, when we talk about, well, SDI is offering $3,000 and so forth, it may seem for people who are listening that this is somehow like this easy conversation. That's not the case. Sitting here in October, talking about this, this is something that's being discussed for the 10 months prior to that.
Correct.
If not longer, right?
Correct.
As soon as we, last year's approval went through, we started having discussions with them about how much it is. And so, it's a back and forth. We take very seriously the fact that we're losing revenue for that period of time, but we then offset that with the idea that, A, that it's good for residents and people coming into our town to shop in our downtown, and it's a benefit to our downtown businesses, which is a benefit to overall the community. But this is more private, right? I mean, this is one complex or one developer that's getting the benefit, rather than broader public benefit.
Correct.
And so, from my perspective, I guess, to help guide for the committee, I would say that we should come up with some number. I don't think it should be zero, again, and that whether it's $20,000, which has a rational basis, as I can tell, or some other number that may also equally have a rational basis, that's up for the committee to decide, but I don't think it should be zero. So, that's where I stand. Yes, Rita?
If I may also make, you know, with the redevelopment plan coming forward, even in the next couple of years, there might be more metered spaces from the streets that will be taken away permanently. Obviously, I'm praying and hoping that we add more parking. But again, it is a situation that when council makes decisions, it could be affect, you know, down the road as well.
Right. We create precedence. I mean, rightfully so, this developer is saying, well, you did this for me in the past, continue with that precedent, and if we continue it, we will just reinforce it, that this is how we should, that should be the expectation, not only for this developer, but other developers. And I think we're probably setting ourselves to the wrong set of expectations for people. So, that's my perspective, but, you know, seven, eight of us up here, but everybody can, yeah, committee will, Mike, did you?
No, I just agree with you, David. I mean, you know, one of the things, we've been talking a lot about planning, plans, and what you can do and what you can't, particularly around the meter that they want permanently removed, they didn't have to put a driveway right there, right? There were probably other options. I don't know what they are, but my guess is, there's always options for the most, not always, but for the most part. So, there was a decision made, and the question is, you know, sometimes you've got to pay for making those types of decisions. I just don't see why we would consider doing it for free by any stretch of the imagination.
Marjorie?
I'm in agreement with Councilwoman McTernan. I don't, this is a private benefit. This is taking a public resource and asking the public to subsidize a developer's decision to make a circular driveway. And I think that that's, when you take a private, a public resource, you ought to pay for that resource and make the public whole, so.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I hope this discussion helps then now the committee as it goes and evaluates and comes back to us, but I think that's taking, the noise ordinance, so that is something that was handled administratively, is that?
That's correct.
Okay. And that's how our, I guess our ordinance is resolved, okay? All right. Interesting. Okay. Any other now, moving on, now that we've done with the DAR, unless somebody wants to talk about these things? No? Okay. Any new business or councilperson comment?
Go ahead.
Oh, go ahead. Marjorie, I mean, Mike, go ahead.
I just wanted to piggyback on going way, it's a long time ago, and I didn't know when to chime in about this. The mayor had mentioned the mosquito spraying around these EEE cases. It should make residents more comfortable around that, that Union County does know what they're doing, because I was informed by our health officer at a health meeting that Union County actually has the oldest mosquito suppression department, I guess, or organization in the country.
Whoa.
So, they've been doing it longer than anybody. So, we get the benefit of that expertise.
Wow, thank you for sharing that. Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify something that we talked about the last time, and then was in the paper or in the TAP regarding the Junior League and their activities in how they work with the city. So, the Junior League's mission, in fact, is to train women to be effective leaders in the community, and in that process, they develop, fund, and launch programs, and launches, one of the operative words there. They will create, they helped build maybe playground, they made a big contribution to the First Aid Squad, they helped build the Jefferson School Garden. They don't continually fund a project, I mean, here and there, there are iterations, there are times when they will fund a project again. But there were, some of their members were disturbed to think that we in the city think that they are slacking off and not maintaining their commitments, because they are. They've been 90 years in Summit, providing all sorts of support to our community, and it was just, how they heard it was not what we intended, and I just wanted to clarify that we do recognize what they do, and we certainly appreciate it. So, that's all I want to say.
Thank you. Obviously, yes, we all appreciate the efforts of the Junior League in this community. Thank you, thank you for that, Nora. Anyone else? Okay. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you.